We're gonna go over a little bit. The main thing is that we're gonna go over it a little bit. Do you do a little Q and A? And then we'll give y'all a chance to submit like a question.
Everybody hear me? Yeah, everybody hear me?
Oh, you gotta be laughing.
Okay, so when it's five thirty. So we're gonna start at five thirty. You can make sure we give the appropriate time. And so we said that we would start at five thirty. Jennifer's gonna stay up here and continue to admit people online that are joining virtually. But we're gonna go ahead and jump in with the slide portion first. And then we will get to the comments at the end. One thing I will say and we'll reiterate it at the end. If you if you do speak today and you do give a comment, I would encourage you to also submit that comment. Electronically so that we can make sure we get it answered the way the question that you have asked. Okay, in pertaining to the action plan. But do feel free to to go ahead and speak today.
I'm good on that.
Is it okay? So we will ask during the comment period that each of the comments will be limited to three minutes per person. So that we can make sure we give everybody ample time to make comment.
All right, so if you want to go ahead.
Can you tell us who are?
Yes, okay, so I apologize. Yeah, no, I'm getting into that here. No, I'm like, I'm getting into that. My name my name is Travis Weber with the Kentucky Department for Local Government. With me today is Gabe Nickel. Brandon Gibson. And Jennifer Peters, all with the Department for Local Government, working with the CDBGDR program. I'm gonna go ahead here. And so with today's meeting, this is the first of two that we are doing in East Kentucky over the next two days. Tonight's meeting, and then we will be doing an additional meeting in Prestonsburg tomorrow night at five thirty as well. You obviously can join virtually there, or you're welcome to come to Prestonsburg and join that meeting too. It is going to be the exact same meeting as what this is, just in a different part of the affected areas. So to start off with the CDBGDR program. The United States Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD announced that the Commonwealth of Kentucky would allocate two hundred and ninety seven million nine hundred and ninety four thousand dollars in funding to support long term recovery and mitigation efforts related to the twenty two disaster flooding. And I think that's an important distinction with this is that this is now for the twenty two disaster funding. We were here back in this time last year to do one for the twenty one disaster funding. This is for the twenty two. So this is a separate here. This is a totally separate one from the one that we were here last year. Today's public hearing will provide residents as well as members of the community to interact and offer offer comments that were regarding the action plan, understanding the goals of CDBGDR and provide and provide and review action plan programs and budget. Keep in mind, when you're looking at this action plan, this is a thirty thousand foot view of how this plan is to be carried out in multifaceted efforts in relation in relation to the disaster. This does not drill down in to the individual programs and policies that are going to be taking place in order to carry out the activities that are going to take place in regards to the actual, you know, building of the infrastructure, the housing and the mitigation efforts on the in the disaster impacted areas. This is the this is the top level view of how we're going to carry those out. Action plan requires that we put it on the comment for a third, put it on our website for a thirty day public comment period. The last day to submit comments is going to be December thirteenth of this year, no later than four thirty P M Eastern Standard Time. So that's the last day that you can submit any written comments. Obviously, you can also verbalize any comments today, and we are taking notes on the comments here. Today's meeting is also being recorded, as you saw too, that today's meeting is being recorded so that it so that we can make sure we get all the comments and that this presentation will be available to watch back. Public comment, if you are submitting public comment, there is the mailing address for our public comment as well as the phone number if you want to call and leave a public comment. So those are the places to officially submit public comment. We also have an email address, D L G dot D R at K Y dot gov to submit comments electronically. And these slides are gonna be on the website too. Yeah, so these slides at the conclusion are also gonna be on our website. So you'll be able to access this information. So if you do feel like you missed anything in the notes, it will be on our website going forward. And I and I'm happy to go back if we do pass over anything. Commonwealth will review and respond to all written and oral public comments made, whether those are offered today or whether those are offered online. We will review and respond to each one. Any updates or changes made to the action plan and respond in response to a public comment will be clearly identified in the action plan through any changes that we make. So if if anything that comes out of today that results in the changing of the action plan that's already out on our website, those will be clearly identified in the action plan. Comments, public comments also will be submitted to HUD with the final action plan. So any of the public comments that come to us, they go attached to the action plan that is submitted to HUD for approval to get so that we can carry forward with the program. All right, funding timeline in twenty in twenty twenty two, torrential flooding. FEMA disaster forty six sixty three resulted in a major disaster declaration, which qualified the Commonwealth of Kentucky to receive the long term disaster recovery funding, such as the CDBGDR program, which is what we're talking about tonight. In May of twenty three, Congress appropriated three billion dollars in CDBGDR for disasters that occurred in twenty twenty two. So the money came in May of twenty twenty three for the three billion dollars. Now, that's when Congress appropriated it. That doesn't mean that the Commonwealth of Kentucky hasn't. In May of twenty twenty three, HUD allocated funds for those experienced disasters in twenty two. And HUD will receive of that, as I mentioned, two hundred and ninety seven million nine hundred and ninety four thousand dollars. C D R funds will aid Kentucky citizens in recovery from these devastating storms and strengthen impacted communities to help prevent future damage to homes, businesses, schools and public infrastructure. All right, D L G must, as a part of being as a part of the administrative responsible entity for these funds, we must, in addition, conduct an unmet needs assessment to understand the cost of damages when considering the funding. We will develop mitigation needs assessment to understand the impacted area's risk and address future disasters. Leverage the limited D R funds for different housing, infrastructure, planning, economic development. Here come revitalization and mitigation programs. Keep in mind, of the D L G two hundred and ninety seven million nine hundred and ninety four thousand dollars, eighty percent must be must be used to address unmet needs in the HUD identified mid areas. And we're gonna touch on that in a few slides. What exactly are the HUD identified mid areas if you haven't seen it already? Kentucky D L G shall allocate at least seventy percent of all of that two hundred and ninety seven million nine hundred and ninety four thousand towards benefiting those that are considered to be low to moderate income in your communities. So that means that seventy percent of those funds, if you are familiar with the CDBG program, just like the regular CDBG program, seventy percent of those funds have to go to meet the LMI national objective. Provide the public with an opportunity to review and public and comment on the action plan, which is what we're doing tonight as part of that process. And we will submit that action plan at the end of December twenty twenty three to HUD, at which time HUD will have sixty days to review and approve that plan. Funds will not be available to the Commonwealth until HUD and Kentucky D L G have executed a grant agreement, which that cannot happen until we get a plan approval from HUD. Programs will begin to launch in twenty twenty four. Programs will end with eligible participants having completed closeout. All budgeted funds have been expended, or six years of execution of grant agreement with HUD will end the program. All right, here's a little bit more of the that kind of breaks it down. And I won't go through this because I kind of just hit on the timeline. But this right here, this timeline, this kind of gives you an idea of federal actions and state actions. You can see this is an effort that has to go that has to take place on both sides. And you can see based on this timeline here, kind of where we're moving along. Right here, November of twenty three, right in the middle of the page, that's where we are right now. So we've already done this. We've done this portion back behind it. Going forward, that's the timeframe that we're looking at in terms of moving the program in the moving the program to the actual expenditure of dollars. D R funds are used to help the most impacted and distressed areas recover. D R funds can be used for long term recovery, so for projects in housing, economic revitalization and restoring infrastructure. It is considered last resort funding and is used to address unmet mitigation needs other federal programs have been unable to meet. The portion of the funds will be made available to address mitigation needs to make impacted communities more resilient to current and future risks, which can include infrastructure, planning, housing and economic revitalization. Okay, of that two hundred and ninety seven million nine hundred and ninety four thousand, you probably feel already that we have split this thing several different ways. And keep in mind, these percentages overlap. The mitigate, so of that of that amount of money, fifteen percent must be set aside for CDBG mitigation efforts. That is a part that is a part of the disaster funding is mitigating, as I mentioned, for future disasters. Timeline, we have six years from the date of the executed grant agreement with HUD to spend the D R funding in Kentucky. National objective, we touched on it, seventy percent. Where there you see the dollar amount, two hundred and eight million five hundred and ninety five thousand eight hundred dollars of that money must be used to benefit benefit those that are considered to be low to moderate income. Now, what I will mention is that when you talk about benefiting low to moderate income is that depending upon the type of project you are doing, the way you the way you go ahead and qualify that LMI benefit can differ. It's not the same across the board. Duplication of benefits. Owner occurs when a person, household, business or other entity receives financial assistance from multiple sources for the same purpose. This is a big key factor in D R that is very different from the other CDBG programs and other HUD programs that we look, we have to look at to ensure that the CDBGDR funds are not duplicating a resource that is already available or in use in your community. Here is what this is kind of just a brief, quick look at. These are the income limits, and we have a full breakdown of this on our website. These are what it looks like. So in order to meet that LMI national objective, these are the income limits to where a household would have to fall into in order to be considered a low to moderate income household. So for example, if you are a four person household in Breathitt County, it is no more than fifty one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars total household income. So it's it's on there for each individual county that was considered a HUD mid. Now, if you want to go ahead and go again. Okay, you heard us talk about the HUD mids. So HUD identified what they consider to be the most the most impacted and distressed of the communities when they allocated the two hundred and ninety seven million nine hundred and ninety four thousand. Those counties are Breathitt County, Knott County, Letcher County, Perry County. And they also designated zip code four one five two or four one five seven two in Pike County. Now, with that, D L G was able to expand, and we can serve all of Pike County as part of this D R funding. That's a that's a option that we have as the state, as the recipient of the D R funding, whether to leave it for the zip code that HUD has identified or to expand it to the entire county. We expanded it to the entire county. Go ahead and flip them. And that's where eighty percent of the money has to go towards. Now, the remaining twenty percent is what's that?
Because it goes to not, I mean Pike County?
Pike County is eligible.
So one of five counties.
Eighty percent. They're one of the five that qualify for the eighty percent. Yeah. Um, now with now with this right, so with this right here for the twenty percent, the remaining twenty percent of the funds are eligible to be used in what we identify as as non HUD mids or state mids. And they are Casey Clay, Cumberland Floyd, Harlan Johnson, Lee, Leslie, Lincoln, McGoffin, Aldley, Powell, Whitley and Wolf. Those are the ones that are that are considered the state mids eligible for the remaining twenty percent of the funding. Be going on the next. Now, here are the program areas identified in the action plan and the breakdown of the funds associated with each one of those. So we have under the housing category, there are multiple different types of housing that can be done. You're looking at single family new construction, which is the construction of, and we'll get into these in a second. So I won't go into detail here. Owner occupied rehab slash reconstruction, multi family rental new construction, and then multi family rental rehab reconstruction. That's actually rental rehab reconstruction. Doesn't have, it's not necessarily multi family. Economic revitalization, infrastructure and other activities. That includes your storm water, watershed restoration, broadband, debris removal, roads and bridges. We also have the FEMA non federal cost share buyout program as part of this where we will where we are eligible to use D R funding to help pay for the local cost share portion of the FEMA buyouts. As you know, that that FEMA portion is only seventy five percent. And then you have to have a state and local match to that to split the remaining twenty five. And the and this portion will cover that. Public service, which is considering the housing counseling and legal aid. Those are housing counseling services to home buyers. Planning and administration. All right, single family new construction, single family new construction is the construction of new single family housing units, your traditional single family housing unit on land or property where single family housing unit did not exist before or where it didn't or where the owners of those homes did not live before and where these new houses are being built. So you just think about it. If if it was not housing before and you're building housing on it now, that's single family new construction.
But not if it's on the same date.
Oh, we're going there next. All right, now, key key got a head start. And the next one is owner occupied housing. So if you are doing housing, if you own, if you own your own land, you own your house that's on the land. Your house was damaged by the by the flooding disaster. You are eligible to have that house rehabbed on that same lot where your house existed. That is not single family new construction. That is owner occupied rehab slash reconstruction. Because you you own it and you're gonna put a house back on it. Now, that can mean that if you own, if you have a house on a lot, and let's say that the front part of your house is in a flood plain and the back part of your lot is not in a flood plain, you can have that house reconstructed out of the flood plain if it was damaged by the flood up onto the higher portion of your property that is on back in. That qualifies as rehab reconstruction. You however, the key is here is that you have to have owned it at the time of the disaster and still own it now.
What's the maximum benefit?
What you mean? I can't see her application.
I think it's only fifty thousand in this one.
No, 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 this is this is. Oh, it this that part has not been that part has not been finalized by this. This is not accurate down here to fifty and hundred thousand. That is not accurate.
So it's a hundred thousand, not fifty?
Or no, 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 that's not accurate. No, no, that that will be updated. No, no.
To what?
What? That will be finalized in the policies procedures. Yeah.
How can we comment if we don't have an exact figure?
Yeah.
It's listed in the plan. It's written that a hundred thousand dollars for fifty thousand of it being forgivable loan and the other half.
Is that what we left it at?
Okay, so right now it's at a hundred thousand dollars then per property. Yeah. All right, multi family new construction. So this is the construction of new multi family units.
A hundred thousand dollars forgivable.
What's that?
Is that?
Fifty thousand grant, the other fifty thousand forgivable loan is how it's worded in the accident.
Yeah. Maximum award for new for multi family new construction, two hundred thousand dollars. Per unit. This is for the construction of new multi family housing where multi family housing did not exist before. So this is not a rehab or reconstruction. This is new construction. Rental rehab reconstruction. This is for programs where if you had a if you had a rental property that was damaged at the time of the disaster and you want to rehab that property back in and bring it back into service so that you can rent out again, that's this program here where you can bring it back online and and rent it out to a low to moderate income household. You can see here the maximum for that is a hundred thousand dollars per unit.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow.
So housing counseling as part of, you know, as part of the program where we, where we're going to have new home buyers, it's, it's important to make sure that we are providing resources to those new home buyers so that they understand the, uh, the requirements of becoming a homeowner. Um, that's where the housing counseling and legal aid services can come into play. Um, that's a part of the action plan here, um, and that program will roll out with the housing. All right. I mentioned the, um, the, the FEMA non-federal cost share buyout program. This is where, this is the program that matches the FEMA buyout on the properties for the local portion. Um, keep in mind, same thing to mirror with the FEMA properties. The ineligible activities for those include second homes, sold homes, vacant lots, agricultural land, commercial structures, travel trailers and RVs and boats. All right. Small business.
Out of the, uh, 297 million dollars, I got $3 million to play with for economic development. That's okay because we know what the biggest needs are in the area. But it is available. A small business grant program is designed to allow for flexible range of eligible activities. Like Travis said earlier, the timeline, we, we are scheduled to start in the spring of 2024. The maximum award is $200,000 or $20,000 per new job or replaced job or retained job. But a, a business can apply up to 200,000. Uh, we prioritize revitalization funding in low and moderate income and social vulnerability communities. So, uh, like it says up here, the budget is 3 million. The HUD mids is getting 2.4 and then the grant, the state mids is only able to get 600,000. Um, we will provide funding for only working capital and that is, does not include the business owner's salary. That does include, uh, employee salaries or utilities. Uh, but you'll have to, you'll have to document last three months of your, uh, utility bills, the salaries and so forth. But the only thing that we're allowed to use the economic development, uh, funds for is for working capital and equipment lost in the flood. Can't be new equipment, something that you didn't have before. Yeah. It has to be equipment that you had and it, and it, and it for, from the flood. So you, it'd be for one for one replacement. Eligible activity or eligible applicants for this is city, cities and counties, tribal governments. Um, and then we will also provide jobs for LMI individuals to help with that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, you've said the owner of the business is not eligible for their salary.
Correct.
It's a small business of two people and one of them is the owner and they have another employee. Why is the business owner not eligible?
I asked if you put that in writing and we, we will comment on that. Yeah. Yeah. And if you don't care, hold off at the end. We'll give everybody three minutes at the end.
Did I hear you say that no payroll costs were eligible?
No, pay for, for the employees.
Okay.
Okay. I'm Jennifer Peters and I'm with, uh, Public Infrastructure Grant with regular CDBG. So we've still got the same, uh, programs as we did in the 21, but you can also see that we've expanded a little bit here to include some roads, bridges. We've also got debris removal in here for you this time. I know that was a big thing. I don't know how big it is anymore. I don't know exactly where you want your debris removal, like the big stuff. But I was hearing from FEMA, KYEM, that you still needed money in that pot. So we put some money there for you. I know you can see that my budget is kind of high at 134 when it says in the unmet needs and I think my unmet need is like 131. This has some of the mitigation money set in it. So I mean, and as we evolve, this plan will evolve. So just because it has like, I've got 134 million in there right now. If we get into this six months into the application process and we see I don't need 100, we need to shift some money over. Let's say Dave needs money. We'll be able to shift money up to $10 million without it being a substantial amendment to the plan. And when I say a substantial amendment, that be, you know, you heard Travis talk about if we, you know, if we need to add a program or if we need to take a program away or move certain money, we have to go back to HUD. So we set our, our limit kind of high on what we don't have to do. So if we had to shift some money out of public infrastructure over into housing, one of those, it's, it's not a problem. This is going to be a living, breathing document till we close this bad boy out. So, uh, we've got 107 that's going to have to go to the mids and 26 million that'll have to go to the other 20% to those other counties that are not those scar spot. The timeline, we're all running pretty close on the same timeline, spring into 2024. Uh, with our discussion with HUD, they are going to start looking at this as soon as we submit our date to submit. Right now, barring everything goes right, is December 20th. That's our goal. That's our deadline. So we hope to have, so that's when their 60 days will start will be after that and they are, they said that they're going to, as soon as we submit, they're going to start their review process. So they're going to be working with us to try to get this out, get our grant agreement to it as fast as they possibly can because they've been here. They've seen this. They actually, yeah, uh, they were just here in Perry County. They, uh, went up, I think Judge, did you go? When HUD was here or did you just Angie?
I think Angie.
Would it describe you?
Yeah. No, I, I went.
They, they, they've seen, they've seen the devastation. They were here. Matter of fact, one of the times I were here, you had your rental rights and it was starting flood again. And they've been here. They've taken it firsthand. They're very sympathetic and they want to help us get this going as fast as possible. Uh, for the public infrastructure and that kind of stuff, those, uh, applications are already online for 2021. They're going to stay safe. I still got to do some stuff on the planning. I know, I know, I know somebody's going to ask me about it. But still have to work to do on that. Now, when it comes to the roads and that kind of stuff, we're going to have that, the details will come, we'll get to the policies and procedures. And then I'll have to come up with some application or something. I know nothing about roads. I know nothing about bridges, but be patient with us and we will learn together. The maximum amount on a regular PF for here is $10 million per project. So you'll have, I'm hoping that we will, I'm looking and I kind of gauged that on actually Skyview because water and sewer for Skyview is just right under 9 million. So we kind of, you know, and if we have to, we can adjust that up later if we have to go higher. That's where we are. Uh, so over here to the planning, we've got 1.5 million. Uh, I had started that out a little higher because you can do up to 15% in planning, but I just wanted to drop it back down because we needed to put the money back into the housing portion. So I'm keeping this low for at this point in time. Again, this is for your mitigation plans. If you do not have one, you can, uh, uh, use this money to write one. I think we had been in discussions with Jennifer here on some, and I know I have with you on writing. So, uh, same thing here, spring of 2024, you'll get between 25 to 100,000 per project eligible applicants on either planning or the infrastructure is or units of local governments or cities, your counties or your tribal governments. Uh, so, uh, for eligible here, it must be a DR eligible under DR. Must have, uh, proposed plan that'll mitigate risk, be located in a disaster impacted area. And DLG will, uh, set up a weighted scoring that will assess such factors as LMI social vulnerability as well as other factors. And for planning and the mitigation stuff, when it comes to stormwater, uh, reviews and stuff, I am working closely with the Division of Water on them and I've also been, I will be in touch with KYEM for their assistance because they know more when it comes to mitigation and stuff than I. Matter of fact, I like, I've got a couple of 21 applications that Division of Water have under review just to make sure that the projects that they're proposing is to mitigate what's there because that's not, it's, uh, straightening out a little bit of the stream, redoing the floodplains, putting in new culverts and that kind of stuff. So I mean, it, it's kind of entail. So it's got to be somebody besides me. I don't know. I'll be honest. So what we have here is we're getting ready to come into the questions and answers. So what we need to ask for, uh, of you now, if you haven't already done so, when you get ready to leave, if you would, we have two sign in sheets up here and that we would like for you to sign in so that we can account for your presence. Actually, I see, uh, I see Judge Alexander's got it. One room. Uh, when you do, when we call on you to give or ask a question, that you state your name loudly and clearly and then your comments and you will have about three minutes to speak. We will give you a, a 30-second, uh, notice before your time is up. Okay. I believe that it, the next one is just contact information for the three of us, I believe. So, so now let's just, we'll just go ahead and start. Thanks Judge. We'll go ahead and open the floor for questions. Comment.
I got the clock.
Go ahead.
Um, my name is Key, K E Y, last name Douthit, D O U T H I T P. I'm with the Breathitt County Long-Term Recovery Team. Um, so I will speak quickly since I got a few things to talk about. Um, the verbiage in the action plan says DLG anticipates that the majority of the funding will be utilized to build single-family housing on high ground sites and carry out these activities directly. If funding is still available, DLG will open applications to other eligible applicants. Same verbiage is for the infrastructure money, um, says that it should be, um, preferentially go to high-ground properties. Um, Breathitt County is a mid. So theoretically, we are supposed to be eligible for, um, you know, between the five county, 20% or so-ish of, um, the mid money, yet we do not have a high-ground project. So the way the verbiage currently reads is that Breathitt County will not receive any benefit from either new housing or infrastructure money based on, um, the current action. Um, the second comment is that, uh, in the 2021, um, action plan, there was 200,000 appropriated for reconstruction. So people they could build houses on land that they already owned, yet it's 50 million plus, or 50,000 plus 50,000 forgivable loan for this action plan, which is not enough money to build a new home on in some structures.
And that was under, what, what was the, the 50-50 day split?
That was under the reconstruction fund.
Okay. Can I use the rest of his three minutes?
Yeah, you're on. Yeah, you can. I thought I heard a ding. I thought, maybe it was on there.
Oh, I think, I think that this up here is the end.
Okay.
I don't know if it's people coming in, going out.
Add is that, um, so with 54 million appropriated to mids, that comes out to 200, I wanted to write it down, um, 220-something, I think was the number I came up with for new homes. If you, 200,000 per home, that's 270 new homes. Just on what's promised for the high grounds, that's not enough money to even fund the high ground. So once again, my thought is that that will leave Breathitt County out of the mix.
Go ahead, man.
I'm Mayor Laura Thomas. Mayor in Jackson, and, and when I read the action plan, and I can't say that I read every page of it because it was very lengthy, but, uh, my first initial response is I don't see Breathitt County in this. And we were, um, as you can see by the numbers, one of the most impacted in both 21 and 22, the number of people and homes that were affected. So I want to know if, um, if the interpretation is literal in the, uh, mega sites that the state is sponsoring, if that is what you're referring to as higher ground sites? Or if you just mean we're all going to build out of the floodplain because we're smarter now and we've learned? And you know, our side in Breathitt County that might only have 10 homes is out of the floodplain and thus on high ground. So that's my question is what are you referring to as high-ground sites? And it, it seems very, um, I don't know if unfair is educated enough to use, but it just seems very unfair that when you look at the mid counties and then you look at the high, even the high-ground projects are not even all in the mid counties. So I'm very confused. I have to say the action plan was not at all what I was expecting. Not that I don't appreciate all that you guys are doing. I know you're overwhelmed and overworked just like all of us in this room. So I don't know, you know, what's changed. Uh, we appreciate your help in Breathitt County. I know you've tried uh, to help us, you know, we just have problems that are different. And so, you know, there's not going to be a cookie cutter solution for all of the counties and cities represented here. And I just hope that this is not right and not, you know, it's going to change. You'll have a minute. Okay. My last minute is, my, my last minute is, is I just, um, I'm very also confused by how you and it helps a little that you say you can decide whether to include all of Pike County. But if you look at the number of individuals in Pike County, I mean, really even you could look at Floyd, not that I want you to add a bunch of people to the mid, uh, because it will continue to hurt our county. But, um, I, I think that is also unfair that you would all of a sudden consider all of Pike County that would have access to these funds. And if I have 30 seconds left, I will say that I have, you know, I think everybody in here spoke to our congressional, our federal delegation and, and they have looked me in the eye and said, we are setting aside, you know, we are saying this money is to help you all in Breathitt County. And I'm sure they told all of you all the same thing. So. Thank you.
My turn?
Yep.
Okay. So, um, my name is Millie White. I work with crisis and provision, plus I'm on long-term recovery and all that, and I'm a two-time survivor. So, uh, yes. So, um, you said HUD went to Curry County? You said, you said we to Skyview and there, did they come to Breathitt County?
Yes, I have been here, yes.
Or did, did we?
Whatever did.
Breathitt County in the mic.
Actually, yeah, Secretary Fudge, I mean, the federal director was in Breathitt County and understands our situation.
Okay. So then we're going with HUD. You said lower income. Am I being punished because that I, I do not fall in that lower income?
Thank you, sister.
I, um, so I was flooded, my daughter was flooded, my brother was flooded and my two nieces were flooded. And we're not in that, we're not in the same little area, but we don't fall in that low income. My husband's last day of work before his retirement was that day of the flood. So he's been punished because we had to take our savings because we didn't qualify for anything else. We didn't qualify for FEMA. My family didn't. None of my family hardly qualified for FEMA. So we're being punished because we do not fall in that lower income. And we work. So I don't think that's right for the ones that have worked all their life, use our life savings to fix our home because we had to go back to work. I had to go back to work. So now I get no help. And they told me that if I didn't move, I would never get no help from FEMA. So where do I fall in this plan? Where does my family fall in this plan? Has anybody got an answer for that?
No, they won't answer you today.
Listen, this, this is, this is like for us to tell them what you're telling them. So we can review this plan and try to get the changes that you're talking about.
But every place that I went is for lower income. I'm being punished. I feel like I'm being punished, discriminated against.
I'm Millie Smith, and I'm the co-chair of the Britha County Long-Term Recovery Team, and that is kind of, I'll piggyback on Millie's comment is when we're talking about, uh, distributing funds equitably. I think there's a barrier and, and some things that, that a lot of people don't understand when they come to our culture in our area. And we have people in that aging population who has no concept of a mortgage. But yet they've worked their life away. They were, they were middle America that built this country. But because they retire, and had they worked all their life to retire, they are not going to fall within these zones of hell. How is that equitable? How are they not part of a vulnerable population? Being in eastern Kentucky and in a rural area is oftentimes in and of itself being a vulnerable population. So how are we truly being equitable and culturally competent to our area when we completely omit someone simply because they've worked their life away to invest in the American dream? And then just be left to hold it all, especially those that flooded two years back to back.
In the first year, I got a hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirteen cents.
Oh, that's all I can think of right now.
I'm a magistrate, District Three, I'm Drew Lovins. I was flooded as well. I'm the magistrate. I feel helpless. I felt helpless. Weird. I got flooded, uh, asked for help, couldn't get, I had a mortgage, couldn't get help. Insurance, I had insurance. Insurance paid, still like ten thousand dollars covering it, so paid the bank. The bank got all the money. Couldn't get any help from FEMA, anyone. But I feel helpless, probably can't help these people and, and everyone else that needs, that needs help. We need help. Britha County needs it.
We got some chats up here, it looks like seven questions, maybe, in the chat box. Comments?
Go ahead, Paul, with, uh, Judge Noble.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna kind of echo, uh, what the mayor had said and, uh, uh, or had said, uh, af- after reviewing this, I mean, I, I, I was floored really. I mean, uh, uh, as everybody knows pretty much that Britha County got hit harder than, than any other counties. Pretty much, or I think so, because what Perry County ended up getting and Knott County ended up giving, getting dumped in on top of us, we already got, but, uh, I, I'd like to really know what the, what you define higher ground land, land for housing is. Um, that, that's one thing. Then, then another, should land out of flood zone qualify as higher ground and be a potential for higher-ground, uh, communities? Um, you know, it's, uh, a- a- and I mean, my, my heart broke for, for our county for what we're dealing with. We're, we're kind of, seemed like to me, the way it's written, we're actually getting penalized just because we don't have ground that we can just go out here and start working off out of floodplain and build a community too, uh, um, you know, and, and I, and I'm not against anybody getting help. Uh, I know, I know other people needs it, but Pike County being added on to get the whole county included in it, uh, which I have not been to Pike County and seen what damage they, they've got, so maybe it's not fair for me to even comment on that, but, um, you know, it's just kind of, just kind of hard wrenching to, to read this, and maybe I'm, maybe, excuse me, maybe I'm missing something here. But I mean, this is, uh, uh, this is devastating and, and, and I know people's gonna start coming in more and and, and I ain't got a clue how to answer your question, just, just to be honest, the way, the way it's written up, um. Um, you know, that, that's pretty much it. I'll just, uh, you know, body else speak, but, uh, I, I, I hope this is looked at and, and we, we are included in, and I know twenty-one, we got slammed. Uh, then we ended up getting damage that other county down here didn't, and then, you know, then twenty-two, the way it's been, and even while the flooding was flooding, we was getting another flood. I mean, uh, it's just, you know, it's just tough. And I, and I, and I'll quit it there.
My name's Jeff Dobbs from the Anok County Judge Executive, uh, just kind of hit by one. Some of the other folks have, uh, already touched on. First of all, uh, I don't want to sound biased just to my county because we know several counties were, were hit very hard, Knott County, Prairie County, Letcher County, and Britha County, I feel, was probably heavily impacted. And, uh, you know, a couple times for the Commonwealth housing, you know, in Knott County, we had people come from other counties. We were there to give them a hand, same as Britha County or Prairie County and Letcher County. Some of our folks ended up in their, uh, Commonwealth housing, uh, areas to, to house our folks in a warm, dry place, just a secure place to stay. But, uh, we do feel that the, uh, it's, it's a major disadvantage to the targeted hit counties that, uh, that Pike County be added in, as a whole, you know, and, uh, not just a targeted, uh, uh, area, because probably Britha or, uh, Floyd County, I feel was probably hit as hard as there is a Pike County. And we just do feel like, uh, that, uh, first of all, is a major disadvantage to, for targeted areas. Uh, second, the C B G D R funds verbiage says that all the building funds will be utilized first for higher-ground communities. There's funds left over that will be used for single and multi, uh, used homes. This is a big disadvantage for our counties, uh, such as Knott, Prairie, Britha, and Letcher. As a cost to build from the higher-ground communities will absorb funding really fast. But some of the higher-ground communities, I think, uh, as Judge Noble spoke on, I don't think, uh, what we classify as a higher-ground community, I don't think Britha County has, uh, really has a higher-ground community such as, you know, we have, uh, Chestnut Ridge and Olive Branch, Skyview and, and Prairie County. So, uh, what mean that the excess funding, if there is any, will be available to, uh, folks that, or the folks that are living in an area that is out of the floodzone that choose to rebuild, will that money be available to them, or how long is it gonna be? So I think that's gonna be a disadvantage to, uh, to our folks and, uh, uh, no, and not anybody from these other counties. So, uh, I, I really want to touch on, but I just, I, I think wanting that money to just the higher-ground communities is a disadvantage to, uh, a lot of folks that higher-ground communities may not work for.
Yeah, somebody ready for me? Mary Flowers, if you want to go ahead.
Um, yes, this is Mary Flowers. I'm, I'm actually from Letcher County. Um, I just had a few questions that, one, where would we fall under, like, what category? Um, we was flooded here in Letcher County pretty badly and actually got told that we was not able to fix our home because they condemned it on the spot. Uh, then, later on, after that, we got told, you know, that we would be able to fix it, but they had already tore it down. And then all this money that was donated to Letcher County, I mean, where, where was it at? Where is it at? Because there's still so many people here in my county that need the help and we just, we can't get it. And we, when we was flooded, did what? I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, they'll write your comments down, Mary. They, they can't actually respond today.
You, you can continue.
Now got out of a camper and into a home. However, the home's needing work and like material-wise is needing it. And to be honest with you, we really, I mean, we cannot afford, you know, to do that. Would we fall under the low-income housing program or, you know, what, what do we need to do more to try and get help back in Letcher County? Not just for us, but for many of the others that is still living in campers trying to get into homes.
Anybody else out here?
Yeah, I, uh, just, just a few quick ones too. Uh, as we talk about the load of modern income, that's, that's what I've got in my notes. Is that the, the flood didn't discriminate on who, it wasn't red or blue, it wasn't Democrat or Republican, and it wouldn't reach reporters. It took, it took everybody that come within its path out. And I was just wondering if we could look at possibly even using, I, I think sometimes on the grants, it's gotta be fifty-one percent LMI, which would still leave those working people a chance to qualify for programs. We do, you're, you're exactly right. It seems like we leave the working class families out, uh, uh, of a lot of stuff. Uh, they call the three hundred million is, is, is not enough. We all know that. And, and I'm not complaining on that, but I am saying if we divided up five ways or six ways, and we all know Floyd got hit really, really hard as well, and, and when Britha got it in twenty-one, a lot of that water came out of Prairie, but we didn't have the damage and stuff, so we didn't, you know, we didn't try to jump on that one, even though we didn't have damage and stuff. We, we, we looked to the, uh, twenty percent. The other number in there too that, uh, and, and I don't know if this number even means anything, but, but I want to make sure that DLG realizes that had rental income, rental to rent something in Prairie County is six hundred dollars. There, there's not a single place in Prairie County you can find for six hundred dollars. So, I mean, that, that's, that's, that's off by, you're, you're at a thousand dollars anymore in Prairie County starting to rent something. Uh, jobs for LMI, and so if, if that's, and, and that was back in the, to the economic development, which is not a lot of money, but I, those people trying to go back to work, we need to try to help everyone go back to work, e- even if they're not an LMI. So maybe we could use the fifty-one percent like I see lots of times in grants.
Rhonda online.
Oh, I had to unmute, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Okay. Well, my name's Rhonda, and I'm, I'm a Prairie County resident. Unfortunately, I was a renter. There's not a lot of help out there for renters. Um, we weren't fortunate enough to be homeowners. We had five feet of water in our house. We lost everything we had. We got enough to buy a couch, and I'm sorry, sitting here listening, everybody is just, I've cried a thousand tears. But I've had so many doors shut in my face to tell me no, because we're renters. We don't qualify for anything, and even to get a home, we make too much income because I've worked since I was thirteen years old. I'm sorry. But I just have to give a big shout out to my caseworker. She's wonderful, and Megan, if you're there, I love you and thank you for everything you have helped us do and accomplish in such a short time. But I just feel like there should be more options for renters and people that work for a living. And thank you, Scott. I guess that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Scott McReynolds, I'm the executive director of the Housing Development Alliance, and, and we are participating in recovery in Perry, Knott, and um, Britha Counties. Um, I had a whole long thing thanking DLG, because we talk all the time. We appreciate it, but I only got three minutes, so thanks. Fast is important. You said you wanted to get this approved. Fast is important. Functional, efficient, workable, getting dollars to people is more important. Take the time to get it right. We'll wait another thirty days if we get money that we can spend quickly and efficiently. In terms of Pike County, I'm deeply concerned about that. I understand they were impacted. We don't want to pit one county against the other, but this is a huge increase in the eligible applicant pool. Pike County is, has fifty-six thousand people. There are other mids, including the, those part of Pike County that, um, is already a mid, only have seventy-nine thousand. It's a seventy-one percent increase in the number of people who can access this money. The reality is Pike County as a whole was not impacted nearly at the level of the rest of the counties. According to Eric Dixon and Rebecca Shelton's research, four houses in Pike County were destroyed. The average other mid-county had a hundred and twenty-three houses get destroyed. According to that same research, the average mid-county had eight hundred eighty-one houses with major damage. Pike County had two hundred and thirty-nine. Yes, they need help. Include the, that one zip code and let them get the other twenty percent. Don't let them dilute the money that the other mids need so desperately. Housing is underfunded. You, I understand that infrastructure is getting mitigation, but you're funding it at over a hundred percent of the government need. Housing is at sixty-five percent. I am deeply concerned about the local government's capacity to move this money efficiently. I'm not concerned about our local governments. They are amazing. The work they've done in the last sixteen months is unbelievable. But they're really, really busy dealing with the flood. So why create a system where the local governments have to apply for the money and administer the money? Why not do a more regional approach? I mean, there are nine local government entities at least in the mids. There are four different housing activities. You could end up with thirty-six applications. That's, it is, is an absurd way to do it. So administer the money on a regional level so that it can flow efficiently.
Thirty seconds.
Um, the low, our AMIs are low to begin with, so capping it at eighty percent is too low. Uh, it creates a benefit cliff so that if somebody makes an extra buck an hour, fifty cents an hour, they go from getting significant help to none. Let's create a sliding scale that goes up using like Judge Alexander said, the seventy percent or the fifty-one.
Yes, they will. Those slides will be available online on the website.
Yes, we will put these, uh, once we get back, we will have posted on the website.
Unless Collier wants, then you can go ahead and put them up tomorrow morning. Good.
Here it is, Letcher County Judge Second. Uh, my comments would be that I don't think this money is gonna go near enough, far enough for any county. And then, um, we're kidding ourselves if it does. The higher-ground projects, um, were, were they gonna be great for our counties? Uh, the infrastructure, that's gonna be enormous. Um, I would like for that, for the action plan to, um, address the definition of the higher-ground property. Britha County's having trouble finding those, and I don't want them to get left out. And we are kind of, uh, we're in a predicament too. We've got two high-ground properties. But we also got some other properties that are not designated higher-ground by the governor's definition. So I think any project out of the floodplain should be a higher-level project. The shortage of the money to finish the projects, if we dilute that money down into Pike County, uh, we're for sure not gonna have enough to go around. The area of Pike County that was affected, those folks need help. But to take away from the, the county. But to take away from the, the counties that truly need the help just to put it into Pike County, I'm not a fault. Um, I think we need to do the help for, for the folks, the region needs the help. I do appreciate everything that DLG is doing for us. Um, we couldn't get none of this done if it were a few votes. Thank you.
My name is Edie List. I'm with Brathitt County Fiscal Court. I currently oversee like the FEMA and RCS buyout program. I'm also, um, I was a disaster case manager with Core. I've been in these homes. I've seen what people have through, what they're still going through, what they're still dealing with. I see the need. I have people come into my office every day saying, where am I going to go? I just don't want to see Brathitt County get forgotten, please.
Uh, my name is Bill Garland and I represent a nonprofit five oh one C three tax exempt corporation that provides services within basically all of the counties that are identified in the disaster area. The corporation has over six thousand employees in this area with probably fourteen hospitals and ninety-seven clinics. So my question, and I've worked for area development districts in the past and worked for a lot of nonprofits. My question is, can the plan be amended to where a nonprofit five oh one C three be eligible to apply directly such as, uh, other federal agencies? You can do that through EDA or ARC without having to go through a local unit of government, be the applicant and then go through a pass through agreement to the nonprofit five oh one C three, which would expedite the process as well. Uh, also, area development districts are a five oh one C three tax exempt corporation and a subunit of local government. So my question would be, would they be an eligible applicant to be working on applications within their service area for particular projects that are identified as need? So that's my question.
Anyone else?
Yes.
My name's Chris Doll, D O L L, just like Barbie. I work at the Housing Development Alliance with Scott. Um, to reiterate that Brathitt County is being left out of the majority of this action plan. As long as it is saying these are going to higher ground development and not defining higher ground developments, everybody is going to assume that it is the ones that the state has been funding. That needs to be better defined and it needs to be defined in such a way that Brathitt County can participate and not cut them out of all of the funding until they get what is just left over. There is a number of people that were impacted by this flood that are uber low income renters. The folks that were living in, uh, very rundown mobile homes, um, that are living on nine hundred and fourteen dollars a month. There is no good way to successfully house these people. Through any rental situation and most of them are not going to want to move into multifamily rental. Multifamily rental is not a good solution for East Kentucky. We need scattered site rental. These people need to go back to a community that they are familiar with. Also, ownership and the difference between being an owner and a renter in this region is very gray. There are a number of people who are living on properties that they do not own, nor do they pay somebody rent on. And without having any definition of where those people fall into, whether they were an owner or a renter, is going to leave out a significant number of people. And there is overlap with the people who are neither owners or renters and the uber low income people who were squatting somewhere and just living somewhere to get a roof over their head. Those people are being left out of this action plan. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Tony Acker with the Not Many Long Term Disaster Recovery Group. And I want to echo all the sentiments that we're concerned about Pike County receiving a larger proportion of the funds. And if you look at the definitions in the ARC of what distressed counties are and you look at the per capita income in Pike County, you can see that it is considerably higher and they have far more resources and will be more quickly able to secure a portion of whatever this is before the smaller counties and local governments could. So we are concerned about that. We're also concerned about the higher ground verbiage. It really doesn't matter how you define higher ground unless it is a very broad definition. Just what does matter is how the funds are released, saying that those funds would not, no other funds would be released until these communities, these higher ground counties were taken care of. That will stymie the population. They won't have anywhere to go. It can create an exodus from our counties that we're already seeing and we don't need to see any of the counties do. So I would hope that you would reconsider that verbiage, saying that all of that money would be expended for those large costly projects before any of the other single family scattered sites or any of these spendings are, are addressed. Thank you.
My name is Delia Hall, D E L I A. I was actually in the flood. And, uh, my question is, uh, people that have wills to land and or water rights, as you could say, uh, they cannot get no money, cannot get help because they don't own the land. It's just passed down. Some people don't even have deeds or ownership, but they need help. They want to stay where they're at. Like myself, I have a will to the land, but I don't, I can't get help. Nobody can get help. If you have, or if you're a squatter, if you're living on family land and you know, there's no paper to it. It's just passed down generation to generation, but you can't get no help. And my mom has drained everything, our savings, everything to try to save our house. And we had water come off a mountain behind my house. I've never seen water do that. I've lived there forty-five years on that land and I've never seen water come off a mountain that's two foot in my house. We even lost a neighbor to the water. I mean, it was, I'll never forget that night. Me and my mom standing, not even this far apart screaming at each other, trying to save our house.
Hi there, my name is Whitney Bailey. I'm the Disaster Response Project Director and Attorney for Apple Red Legal Aid in our Prestonsburg, Lake County office. Um, and I would like to clarify that a disaster law attorney is different from just a straight disaster attorney because I've been called both and after law. Uh, our Apple Red service area encompasses all of the counties from Madison all the way over to, um, Lawrence there, the West Virginia border, and then Clark, all the way down to Cumberland at the Tennessee border. So those thirty-seven counties are in our service area. And that fall, what follows is all of the counties and the action plan are also in our service area. Um, Apple Red is a designated housing counselor. Um, we are identified on the HUD's website and yes, so Apple Red was recently awarded almost one point four million dollars at the beginning of this year to assist with disaster recovery and resiliency efforts. That grant is only for three years. So to have the opportunity to obtain additional funding for an extended timeline, um, as well as open up some of those client eligibility restrictions would be much welcomed and, uh, very much needed. Our current client guidelines are, um, according to the LSC poverty restrictions. So it's very, very tight. Um, something else, so our current team just very, very recently has grown to an additional disaster response attorney along with two parent legals, which is very exciting and shameless plug. We are still hiring, hiring that attorney in our hazard office. If anybody has any friends, please. Um, we would love the opportunity to increase staff capacity along with the current opening. My current caseload alone is a hundred and seventy-six cases and most of those are FEMA appeals. Um, it's, it's, things are still moving and it's low and it's hard and it's very overwhelming and frustrating for every single one of my clients. Whether it's a FEMA appeal because they haven't gotten anything except that bare minimum contractor, uh, money to try to find a contractor is an obstacle in itself. Um, but we are also able to assist with legal issues like title and ownership problems. Um, estate planning things, uh, any contractor, uh, fraud. All of these disaster related legal issues, Apple Red is able to currently assist with those things.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna do Jerry first, Seth, and then we'll.
I'm Jerry, uh, Jerry Roll, Foundation Press, and I agree with everything everybody has said and I hope you're listening. But what I want to speak about is what I keep seeing as the program responsible entity and the administering entity. Um, when this started, we went to the, you know, the legislature said, oh, we're not going to allocate any housing money because we can't use it, we don't know what we need yet, we don't, we aren't ready. For my entire decades of work in Eastern Kentucky and in Kentucky, we have had a gift of a fabulous network of CHODOS and a state housing finance agency that knows how to build houses, safe, decent, affordable housing. Scott said earlier, you said earlier, we want to be fast. There are times when fast sets us back and there are times when fast is of the essence. We have all the infrastructure we need in place to build houses fast using the state housing finance agency, Kentucky Housing Corporation as an administering entity, using our network of CHODOS that we have across this region to build homes along with others. I'm not saying we can do it ourselves. Then working with DLG, our state and local governments and our area development districts. I wouldn't ask our CHODOS to do water and sewer projects. I'm not gonna ask our local government to do housing administration. And quite frankly, DLG, we love you, but this is not your area of expertise. Why not let the administering, the responsible entity for the housing dollars be the state housing finance entity that's been doing this for decades in our state, in our region and doing it effectively? Why add an extra layer and complicate things? People need housing now, housing can't wait.
You're gonna follow that sound.
That's a tough act to follow, sure. Um, my name is Seth Long with Homes Incorporated from Letcher County, a five oh one C three nonprofit, working on affordable housing issues for many years in the community. Probably everything has been said already, but I haven't said it, so just a chance to do that. There's no, down my mind that the BR twenty-two funding is probably our shot, a once in a lifetime opportunity that we have in front of us. And then if we miss this opportunity or if we foul it up or gum up the system and we can't make use of it, it's not coming back to us anytime soon. Um, it's kind of like this is our pitch. If we strike out, that's it. So therefore, there's a lot of weight or a lot of concern in this room because this is our home, these are our people and we care deeply about these things. It's a great, a lot is at stake today, uh, as we talk about this action plan. My main concern I think that I bring is the concern that I have of the weight and responsibility that will be placed on our local government. If you look around and you talk to our leaders, they are to be commended. They have done well, they've done a lot with little, but they're tired, they're wore out. They don't have the staffing resources they need. They don't have the expertise they need. They don't have the funding they need at this time and it's gonna be a hard lift for them if all of this implementation and application process falls on them already. Because this flood has been a giant stress test to the local governments. It has shown their strengths, but it also revealed weaknesses. I don't know one local leader here that says, bring it on, be one more at this time. Very concerned, we love our local politicians and what they do for us. Um, in order to pull this off, they'll need to find grant writers, grant administrators, project managers, disaster coordinators, grant compliance staff to see these projects through to the end. Try to find those skillsets in a rural community. It's tough and you can't pay for them either. That's a huge concern about the capacity. It's not a negative comment about our local government, but it's about the challenges that they face moving forward. Twenty seconds. Twenty seconds. Well, I, I won't be, I got five pages here. The ma- major concern that I have, what's a?
I said, I'll read it for you, I have it on my turn.
The major concern that I have is for capacity. I share the same concerns about Pike County that have been expressed. I share the same concerns about Brathitt County and the higher ground situation and we'll submit written comments. Thank you. Anyone else on mine?
Nobody else, yeah, then I'll go.
Yeah.
Let's roll with the Mount Association. Um, I, I want to change it up just a little bit. I want to talk about the economic revitalization and the small business grant program. And the first thing I want to say is that small business, the only place small business appears in this section is in the title. Um, this, this requires so much administrative burden on part of businesses. And if we're not going to allow owner salaries, and it's not clear to me whether that precludes owners who are W two employees of their own businesses or whether it's just owners taking distributions, um, or other compensation. But so many of our businesses in the hardest impacted areas are going to be businesses of one. Businesses that are owned, they may have one or two employees, but they can't operate if, if the owner themselves can't function. They don't have what they need. The program is great. Um, how are businesses that were impacted by the flood gonna justify or come up with the information to show that they lost equipment? They've got paperwork to demonstrate that they had equipment, they paid for it. This is what it looked like twenty-four months ago in a flood, if they've been significantly impacted. I know a lot of businesses that we work with, not only did they lose their bulldozer, they also lost their records. Um, that, that creates some difficulty. Uh, this, the requirement that, um, and I, I get that this is not something that's likely to change, but the, the requirement, the, the substitution of funds requirement that you can't, you have to be able to show that none of the other funds that you receive are in relation to the things that you're asking from this grant. It's, that's not clear. I, I assume that maybe it will be clear, I hope that it will, but it makes it awful hard if you've been getting donations for some period of time and then have to be able to say, well, no, like that, that money I didn't use to fix this, I used it to do that, regardless of where the pressing need was or what put people back, uh, to work. I often have questions about the administrative burden on our local governments, their abilities. It's not clear whether this is, it says that the local governments will be the applying entity. Are they making one application for all of the grants that they want to disperse? Are they doing that on a quarterly basis or one time ever? Are they doing it on a per application basis? So every time a business, they want to make a grant or they've got a business, are they making an individual application to DLG for that at that point? The requirement, uh, qualifying requirement that the business, they have to show the ability of the applicant to operate and maintain the project beyond the life of the CDPG grant period, so that's six years. Um, frankly, a lot of our businesses struggle. A lot of our businesses were struggling before the flood. What criteria are we using to say, looking at their financial statements after a pandemic and a flood, that they on paper, you know, it's a reasonable shot, they're gonna last for the next six years? Those are quite, yes.
Oh, I'm just saying, you, that, that's the three minutes.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, no, you're, no, you're good, you're good. No, no, you're good.
What about home based businesses or?
No, you only get the three minutes, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
No, 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 you're good.
I'm Joe Boyd, I work for FPP. Um, started, uh, being involved in this whole flood recovery back last October in this room. And, uh, as I sat there, the twenty twenty-one plan was available and we read through it. And, uh, as I sat there, the twenty twenty-one plan was available and we read through it and we said, we don't think this type of plan is going to work for this flood event in, in Eastern Kentucky. Mostly because of the mechanism where local governments are required to go out, find eligible beneficiaries, do preliminary assessments of their damage, submit all that as a packet to D L G, um, and then wait for a decision on whether or not that would be funded. If it is funded, they're then required to go out and procure a contractor to do that work, um, and manage that work. So it's gonna lead to tremendous inefficiencies as well as disparity amongst counties. So basically, those who have the resources to hire, uh, someone to do this work for them, because last thing you want is for disaster recovery to be somebody's other duties as assigned. They're not gonna be able to focus on it. Um, so the inclusion of Pike County is problematic there because they may have staff who can go out and, uh, find applicants and fill out paperwork. It's important to note that none of these, uh, the, the work for going out and doing the damage assessments, finding the applicants, that's something the local government has to eat because pre award costs, as the plan is written, are not reimbursable. So any work you're doing before they make that grant or work to you is on your dime. Um, we've not seen this type of model work, um, in other parts of the country. It's a standard practice. It's never a best practice. Uh, North Carolina, Georgia, and Florida have all at one point had a similar approach. Within eighteen months to three years, they pivoted to a more centralized approach because it's just hard to get the money out there. So a, a process that already takes a tremendous amount of time, you're adding in extra layers of bureaucracy, which is ultimately leading to it taking longer for your disaster survivor to get back into housing that's safe, sanitary, and secure. Other points that have been raised about the high ground definition being needing to be refined, I think I'll emphasize. Um, I am concerned about the budget breakdown where the single family owner occupied rehab reconstruction is around twenty-four, twenty-five million. Uh, multifamily new construction is thirty million. I think your, your owner occupied rehab recon budget is probably a bit too low. It needs to be higher. Um, your infrastructure allocation, as has been pointed out, is exceeds your infrastructure I might need identified. Uh, your housing unmet need is about sixty percent of the total or sixty-five percent, whereas the budgeted funds are only around forty-five percent. So there may be some problems getting HUD to, uh, agree to that unless you properly explain why your allocation is not proportional to your need. And, um, let me go back to the company line note that I was supposed to read off from, but decided.
Ten seconds.
From, um, yeah, that's it. I would strongly encourage you to consider taking into account all these changes people recommend because you're gonna have to change it eventually anyway.
And I probably could get in trouble for not sticking to the script. Any more questions in house? Comments?
I'm Susan Harley. I'm from the Breathitt County Long Term Recovery Team. Twenty-one flood, twenty-two floods, um, and I just wanna reiterate some of the things that, you know, Breathitt County is in a different situation because of our type of gra- tip, how do you say that? Topography and, you know, we shouldn't be left out. We need to be included in the availability of the funds. Our people count just as much as anybody else's. Um, and I don't think it's intentional that they may be left out, but I think it needs to be reworded and relooked at. I also feel that our local government is amazing, but they should not have to manage these things. They are way overworked. They have, don't have the expertise in these areas. And we hope they all win the next election, but if they're not there, somebody else who doesn't know anything is going to have to come in and follow up on that stuff that they don't have the background for. So I think that needs to be relooked at. Um, I really just think that it sounds like it, there needs to be a real re-overhaul of some of this so that it works for this community, for this area of the country, for this area of the state, and it's not just a cookie cutter that is used over our area where the demographic is different.
That all? You want online?
If it's possible.
Okay.
You were breaking it up. Oh, she's already, okay, she's already. You, you only get three minutes. I'm sorry if you've already spoken.
Well, if there is no more comment, I'll make my hands part over time up here. I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn, but please remember to submit all your stuff back, get to us online. We do have an sales spreadsheet. You can go right in there and enter them because we do want people to address them all properly. So we wanna be, you to give them to us in writing so that we know exactly what you have to say and we will address them the best we can. There will be just that, there will be others and more.
And before we leave, I just wanna thank D L G staff for traveling here tonight from Trenton and listening to all of our concerns and putting the effort in, throwing the plans and being concerned about what's going on here and, and helping us, you know, overcome that.
I'd like to be out.
We're gonna hang out more headed to Prestonsburg here. All right, please, let the deadline just speak or comment to December thirteenth by four thirty. Earlier, earlier, Kenny, we've got our dollars.